School Committee to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to call the budget hearing, we're going to call that Budget Hearing to Order. So we're going to move now into the budget hearing from the regular School Committee meeting that I just opened. Do I need a roll call to do that? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are here tonight because we need to certify the budget by the 30th. We were here last Wednesday with a budget proposal, and the budget increase in that one was 2.8, 2.8 percent. The School Committee heard all what was in that budget, what made up that budget, and after that, we then heard from the town of Templeton stating that they needed to have a lesser amount to make things work. Mr. Mason then requested that the School Committee Budget Subcommittee would meet. They did so on Monday night. On Monday, we revised a budget that's here for presentation. We have the 2.8. We're also looking at the budget that was worked with the School Committee, Dr. Kazavant, and we had present the town manager for Templeton. So I'm going to now ask Dr. Kazavant to explain how we came from a 2.8 to a 1.87 budget. Please.
So, let's just explain. We divided 2.80 budget, 2.80 budget, which was actually down from a 4 percent, which we won't get into because it just becomes a little too confusing. So, once we got there, we discussed these numbers last week, as a matter of fact. It was evident that we were extremely far apart between the numbers that needed for the town to work and for the school district to work. So, we met Monday night, seems so long ago, and we discussed the needs that we had and tried very diligently to figure out how we could fit into this number to hit the number for the, to work for the town. Thankfully, you know, compromise was struck because we certainly had a gulf of about, roughly $300,000, $326,000, give or take. And we decided to try to see if it worked, that if we split the difference, and this is the Templeton number, which, and Phillipsen will come into play here and go, but that if we could find somewhere in the area of about $170,000-ish to cut further, how would we do that? So, that was our job, Emery and I, yep, sorry.
Nope, that's perfect. That was our job because there was discussion at that Subcommittee that the School Committee, the students in this town needed an override. They needed more money in this budget because what we had in the 2.8 was necessary to have for children. So, when it was talked about the school having an override, the town already has on their budget an override, two of them, one for the police department and one for the ambulance. Those are the two amounts that are in there as an override. So it was discussed that even though the school department needed the override, that if we could work with the town and we each looked at that amount that Dr. Kazavant just said and found out how we could cut the equal amount, both the school department and the town. At that time, am I right, Mr., well, I'm going to call you Carter. Am I right, Carter, that we said that the override, which is necessary for the school, would be planned for next year?
Yes, hopefully we can work together and we can work early to meet both our needs.
And with the opening of the new school, that that would certainly be a necessity. Yes. So that I wanted to have the acknowledgement that the override is not possible.
This year.
This year, but that next year, we would strongly look at that.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you, sorry for the interruption.
One of the sticking points, something that we had in common that was a sticking point was that no town, for a lot of great reasons, certainly does not want to touch the Street Act. And the school district certainly does not want to have to touch its E and D or whatever monies that we might have, realizing a positive balance of school choice. The reasons are simple on both sides. In case something should happen catastrophically and we would have then an unexpected cost. The budget is so close to that margin, there is no room for error. And so, we were both worried about the same thing ultimately. So, what we were able to do, quite frankly, and what we were looking to do, and of course last week, we discussed this at length, we knew that we needed two middle school teachers because our numbers are so hot, we know this. And we also know that we need, you know, we have retirements that we want to replace. So what we were able to do, quite frankly, is take those needs and apply them to school choice. And that was discussed actually in the meeting on Monday, that what we would do is, again, I know what's a little dramatic, certainly take the risk to do that, to take what that difference that was needed in order to get to the number that the town needs to operate, and then obviously the services that we need to operate, that we would have, you know, that we would make that commitment to put those costs into, or apply them to school choice. Just real quick, it's not fiscally sound to do that because it's not money that you can rely on every single year. You never know how many kids are going to come to school choice and leave, and there's the differential, and that's of course what we can use. So, what we were also able to do is to take, so we cut some positions as well. We have a retirement of a sign interpreter that we just won't replace. We are cutting several extracurricular advisors, we discussed this last meeting, and we're also going to, the best we can, purchase some textbooks this year rather than next. You know, with that, also take what we call tuition of non-public schools, and we increased that. So what is non-public schools? Well, it's one of the things I've been worried about, but it's tuition for students who receive services in special education placement. So we increased the amount that we need to pay out to those schools, and we applied that to school choice. So that was, you know, in a nutshell, that is where the bulk of the difference that we needed to make up to find the $171,000 for the Templeton side of things is where we applied it. We moved the fifth, the needed two teachers, fifth and sixth grade, into school choice. So we, those are the things that we moved into the school choice account. And then we got, you know, we're just so happy that we're getting closer to this number, and Marie figured out later that what we do for Templeton, we obviously have to do for Phillipsen in regards to percentages based on how many students, et cetera. So we had to then find another $30,000 to cut or, from that point, from the Phillipsen side of things, from this assessment, and we did that in the same ways that I've just explained. So in other words, we didn't do anything different, we just had to increase some of those totals for the special education placements to school choice and the, well, the textbooks, et cetera. So, all in total, round numbers, we were able to apply $202,000. We were able to cut that through all the methods that I just described. So really, and keeping it simple because I'm sure there's questions, but I figured that at that point, at this point, it'd be a jumping off spot, we can, you know, obviously discuss specifics.
Okay, so what we're looking for now, questions that we have as to how the budget went from 2.8 to 1.87 increased.
That's on the back of the sheet, right?
That is exactly what Dr. Kazavant just said. The general fund reduction, the signed teacher, the extracurricular advisors, middle school textbooks at 81.
So how much total have we cut? Not 202, more than that, right?
Well, so it depends on where you start, quite frankly. So we start with the 4 percent, I didn't even calculate that, to be very candid, because we had kind of left that in the dust a while ago. Then when we created the budget that matched the town's number, the cuts were so drastic that that was a 1.4 percent increase, which was just the draft, it's in purple. That was discussed obviously at length, and that was the crux of the issue, that there were too many services cut to 1.4. So using the 2.8 as the base, as the, really as the foundation, we cut from there basically. And that was the whole, really the crux of the, or the, I would say, the balance of the conversation on money there. When you cut certain, so I just, so we actually, we had to try to find 158, well, you just can't, it's just not that easy. So when you cut something, you can't cut two-thirds of a.
So we're pretty much still having level services for the students?
Yes.
With teaching, with teachers and stuff? There will be two music teachers in the middle school?
Yes. Looking at my sheet, yes.
But doing it, because we're moving it to school choice.
We're moving it to school choice.
And so we're using that, yeah, that's not a good.
In the one, or that's unsustainable?
No, I understand, I understand that, but for one year.
It's really one, it's one-time money you're looking at.
Right.
And training E and D, I don't think that helps.
Well, and that diminishes, you know, diminishes our capacity or capability of responding to any.
Emergencies.
Emergencies. Again, we don't want to get over dramatic, but we like to make sure that we can do that because there's not much to go. That should take place.
Just because I don't think the number's been out there, school choice, we're expensing $1,611,000 to school choice. That's a lot of money.
How much is that?
That's $1,611,000, it should be in your pocket.
And that's over two FY, sorry, I make sure I say that so that there's no confusion about that, right? It's money that we have in hand and the money that we project at the end of FY8.
So I asked on Monday night how much money we would have left in school choice at the end of the year if we do this.
The only money that we'll have at the end of the year is whatever we end up, the balance after we realize, after we realize the expenses towards school choice, and we get the actual school choice number, which we received somewhere at the end of June, a little after July 1st, when the FY closes, or starts, depending on how you're looking at it. And we would be somewhere around the area of, I think, $300,000 to $400,000, potentially. Again, I don't want to, I don't want to really put that in stone because I don't know until that number actually comes in. But we'll be around there, and we discussed that last.
Yes, Mrs. Matson.
Let's make sure we stay on that 1.87 because it confuses, you know, I guess.
So did I, on Monday night, I understood that the teachers were not coming out of school choice.
So, they've been a couple places, right? First, they were the general fund, that number didn't work, so then we moved them to, well, then we, in order to get to the number that the town needed, that first number, we actually had to use those cuts, right, in order to make that, because we had to link up some close to $400,000 income. That, of course, was discussed at length. So then, at that point, what they'll do is that they will, they will be financed through school choice. The music teacher went back into the general fund, they had to kind of split up some things, but, so we took the two middle school teachers additions and kept them into school choice. Music teacher went back to the general fund.
Assistant principals in school choice.
Assistant principals stayed right, and, yeah, that stayed there the entire time. And the part-time secretary went back into the general fund, which is a retirement, just.
I do have to.
Yes.
So, school choice, it looks like for the operating budget, for funding for it, it comes to $1,223,613, but we're expending $1,611,000.
If you look at the back glory, this was, if you look at the 1.87, where you're reading the school choice number of the $1,223,000, if you look at the back of that, with the $381,000, that's in addition to what was on the front. That was, because if you look, that's proposed, that's the budget cuts of $462,000, you flip it over, how to get to the $462,000?
Not following.
Okay. Add the additional $381,000 that says move to revolving account, it's school choice except for the $27,000 is pre-K. If you add that to the front number, I didn't add it all up, but you get, you're going to get, I'm assuming to the 1.6.
Oh, so that's already taken out.
Are we talking about the 1.87, that's projected to be taken out, yes, they're moving to the revolving accounts.
So, the $1,200,000 is with, all this taken out?
Yes, we're talking about, yes, sorry.
The $1,200,000 is what was originally.
Originally, right.
Originally coming out of school choice. This is additionally coming out of school choice.
Sorry, I was in between.
But then the only thing left in this one-time, this one-time school choice account is what is the result of what you don't use here. So you really don't have any school choice savings.
Well, if we realize the number that we've been projecting, we will realize, we'll have around $347,000 or a little bit over that, at the very beginning, once all said and done, once July 1 happens, and FY18 is over, and we know exactly how much they're paying us for every kid that comes in for school choice. So we know that we have, we have that.
But we certainly don't have the million, right?
No.
But this budget keeps the teachers in the house?
This budget, quite frankly, allows us to do the things that we planned initially, just we're moving it into the general fund.
Now, on Monday night, we said we were going to get to this amount, the 200, and that the town was also going to be able to get to 200, their share of it?
Once everyone was the share that we had hidden down.
So does, how does that work for you, Ms.?
I confirmed the number this morning with Dr. Kazavant at 6332751.
Yes. That is the number.
I think, I mean, honestly, we're as disappointed, it can't be lower, as you're disappointed, it can't be higher. We've had to, I will have to resort to one of the kinds of, I'm not going to call it tricks, but creative use of what goes where, as you have. That reduces us to an deficit still of about 900, not 900, 90,000. And I think that having worked on it today, might find a way to close that, and compromises are never great. If I can work with my board, I think we can find a way to make that work.
This poses quite a problem for the school department in the next fiscal year.
And as I said, Madam Chairman, I hinted if we can start early, work together, because frankly, another ask like this next year will put us under. And we're assuming that we can get the override through that we've been speaking of. So hopefully, I will say that, you know, we started a little bit earlier this year with a joint meeting, I think that was a great way. Maybe even we want to keep the conversation going a little bit after a time meeting when everybody kind of goes, "Ah, thank goodness that's over for this year." Small working group of some sort, and just continue to make improvements in communications and finding a way to make improvements in the resources that we both need. It's not easy.
Well, without any growth, we can't make it, we can't do anything. We've seen what we had to do right now, and I don't know how the rest of the committee feels about this, but this is what we had to, we had to take everything that we have from Peter, and then run Paul, and then pray that we run next year. But without us being able to protract income that has some growth attributed to it, we can't, you've seen that this is, we've done this year after year.
I didn't have to steal from Peter, but I did have to go check Paul's accounts.
I understand that that's the case, but as a school committee member, the kids just, it's not going to, it's not going to be there. Comments? Yes, Mrs. Kojal.
May I ask?
Yes.
Carter, a question. What is your new growth number this year, is it 60,000 for new growth money?
Well, it's better than 65,000.
65,000. What are we doing in town to try to increase that?
John knows speak to that.
Sure. Let's on first. Good evening. Yeah, well, the EDIC has been developed here in Templeton, it's been voted by the Board of Selectmen. Right now, it has two members. We are, it's a seven-member board, so we only have two right now. We're actually helping, hoping the public can take all these TV shots and news articles and everything we're doing to advertise that on our website so more people can apply to hopefully bring in more jobs. But don't be disillusioned, I mean, an EDIC, which is a great start, most of those programs are long-lasting, meaning they take anywhere between four to 10 years to develop. I'll use Athol, for instance, that was a 10-year plan. So now you see where Athol is kind of blown up a little bit, which is great for their town. That would be something great here, but obviously, it takes time and it takes the EDIC to develop those programs and plans, and then sell Templeton, both the agricultural side as well as the business side off of Route 2. But it is being worked.
Thank you. And we do, we do the increases in the town so that we're at the 2.5, the amount that we can do every year.
We are at our maximum levy limit. There's two levers, if you will, there's the levy limit, and then what's called an override limit. We do have some room in the override limit, and we're hoping that the good folks at Templeton will use a portion of that this May on the ballot to help give us that additional 400, 450,000. I'm still, I'm not sure which one of us feels like we want to get off the treadmill first, and Marie and the doctor, and your finance Subcommittee, or me and my board, but we are working it, and we'll just need to have that conversation with the people. We had a public meeting last night, there was some pretty good turnout, there was some good energy in the room, and we're hoping to spread the word, and people will understand that this isn't just about more taxes, it really is an investment.
In the town.
In their home, in their home.
Yeah.
That is the single biggest investment for most of all of us that we ever made. And the value of our home is X based upon a good quality education system, and quality police, and fire, and all the other services that our good volunteers, good people provide. To quality your home will not be the same, the value of your home will not be the same if we cannot continue to improve and market those services. So certainly from my perspective, I'm going to try everything I can to sell this as an investment in the value of your home.
Thank you for working with us. I think this has been a good thing this year. I've appreciated having everybody together and having questions answered and stuff, so thank you.
Madam Chair, just.
Yes.
I think that we started the paper, you know, getting this all together on paper, I think in a pretty good fashion. I think that Daco, Carter's, I think we would have talked sooner, I think that we wouldn't have been rushed, so. So we had the paper set, in other words, we had the budget done this very early, we need to, I think, start the process of talking just as early as night, so that way it's not going to be as much stress and strain on them, you know, because the clock does tick once we get into March. And I think that, I think the point was well taken this year, as we, as we had, you know, multiple meetings, multiple orders.
But yet, the overrides were already in place when we got to the nitty-gritty of our budget. So I personally just don't feel that we've worked well enough together if, you know, when we said, boy, we really could use an override for the school, there was discussion that the other two were already in there and already ahead of this. That's not how it should work. The needs of the school should be at the same time that we're looking at these others. Yes, Carter?
So, if I may, I am scheduled to release my budget to the Select Board at the 4th Monday of February. That's one of the reasons we had talked about, and I know that once we get past this, you know, we probably pick the conversation up again, but it's one of the reasons why I had, you know, approached the idea of can we maybe try to get a preliminary budget from you all in February 15, which leaves me a little bit of time to polish up a budget, and then we can start having those conversations simultaneously, because otherwise, I have to release a budget that presupposes what I believe we can give you.
Right.
So I think that if we can keep some of the other conversation, there were many items on the table when we sat in the library, I think that we can continue to make good progress and, you know, look at those dates so that we're doing this more as partners, as opposed to, you know, two dogs trying to get the best, as part of the both.
Yes, and to, for the people watching this, it's not that people didn't do their homework. We're constrained by the state releasing their numbers so that we understand what the money coming in is going to be. We can tell you what comes out, but that was, the center of the discussion was that we don't get those numbers early enough to be able to do that. The other thing that I find extremely unfortunate is, and I've had numerous people today, it feels that we pit the kids with the elderly. I know it isn't what's intended, but... I know it isn't what's intended, but as they hear it and see it and our, we try to service our children, it seems that both ends of those are being. So it really has to stop and we have to be able to work as a town. Because the youngest and the oldest deserve the best the town has to give. All right, are we ready? Are there any comments on this budget? The question right now is, you've seen, you knew what you had at an increase of 2.8. You've now seen where we get the 1.87, where it comes from, and the ramifications of that. Without any comments, are we ready to vote?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'm really nervous about, oh, I'm below that 2.8 percent budget because we're starting to use some money that's one-time money and it's poor business to do that. We've gone through all these different cuts that we could make after we originally were looking at over a four percent budget and brought it down to 2.82. And then to cut it even further to 1.87, it doesn't leave us any wiggle room to speak of. Plus, you're going to be cutting people that you really have to have.
I see Dr. Kazmin.
Yeah. So when, when we look at this, and we didn't have it a long time, but we, when Anne Marie and I looked at trends and we looked at, obviously, we talk about specification a lot, who is, because those are the, those are the expenses that we literally have no idea that can happen and they are very expensive and very expensive if they're, our district's a residential place. So what, what of course, you know, we do, not we, Anne Marie, I suppose, very well, is she, she manages this like her own budget and that's, you know, our philosophy. And I think that we would never have come here tonight, I wouldn't have come here, Anne Marie's, she has a family obligation. If we didn't think that we could do it under normal, just under normal, regular craziness, right, which every, every year is a different, different hundred million days, that, you know, we, we feel good about this. I think that we can, we can sustain, you know that. And so, you know, yeah, we're right at that edge, but I, you know, I will say that we would never present it, we would never, the charge was to get it down to this number. If we didn't think we could do it, we would have told you that. But to the point, you're right. We are, we are, we are vulnerable. I suppose we're always vulnerable, you know, to a certain extent. You know, we think that we have, we looked at the last four years and what's happened in terms of emergencies and whatever, you know, whatever, again, I don't want to be overstating anything, but we, we picked, that number's right in the middle of where we've been the last four years. So I just want you to know that just on a fiscal plane, you know, we've, we made some, you know, we, we were thoughtful, script out. So hopefully, that puts you at ease at some, at some level. I don't know, but we did look at those things.
As I looked at Mr. Sandin, I thought of Phillipston. Is there going to be problems with Phillipston having that thirty thousand cut? How, are they informed? Do they?
But they're getting money back?
No, they're making another thirty thousand dollar cut to their budget. They have to when we do.
Right. But in the positive for this, will be, in the positive for it.
Their assessment's going to be reduced.
Their assessment's reduced.
Well, then Phillipston is okay. If he's happy, he's fine. He'll have the years. That's all happy.
Okay. Then, then we can say somebody's happy, which I thought they also were doing that. Seems like everybody is. All right, so the, I'm looking for a proposal so I can get a consensus of how many people would be in favor of the 1.87. So I need some, a motion. I know that we're going to certify the budget with a formal statement, but right now I need to know which budget we're going to certify.
I'll make a motion to propose or to pass the 1.8 operating budget?
The proposed operating budget at 1.87, yes. And it's been seconded, Mr. Mason. All right. I'm going to do a roll call on this. Mr. Mason? Mrs. Madsen?
Hi.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Hi.
Mrs. Kozel?
Hi.
Mr. Sandin?
On the 1.87? I say no.
I'm going to have to go with the 1.87 because of, because I do. And I understand, Mr. Sandin, that. So what?
No one's happy.
No one's happy is right. So what will happen now is we have a certification, we have a five-step certification. We need to recess for probably ten minutes so that we can put the budget numbers in that we're going to certify into our, our staffs. So this is the rule of necessity.
I'll come after, afterwards.
Oh, yes.
Say it.
Yeah.
Hold that. What was the question?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we will now recess before we try to get into the school committee meeting. School committee back to order. At this point, I'd like to take any public input on the process before we certify the number. Anyone in the public who has comments? Yes, Mr. Forst?
Cameron Forst.
We can hear you from there?
Okay, perfect. Diane, can? Okay. I, I just want to say that this has been painful for both sides of the fence. We had our meeting last night and we had some very painful decisions to look at when we came to do this number. I'm thankful for this decision here. And I want to say that I, for the fire department, which has been, had the ALS service put up on stake, I donated $500, my own money, to help support that campaign. I'm organizing efforts to get signs and mailouts. And I want to extend that we need to, as Carter said, get to work on this early for next year to see exactly what the need is, what we need to do for Prop Two and a Half override to make sure that you guys are taken care of. And I would pledge the same amount next year for $500 for this override to gather support and spread information.
Thank you very much. Diane, you heard that?
I do, thank you.
I didn't mean to single you out, but I want to make sure that you, you heard it.
No, I, I did, thank you.
Okay. Thanks. All right. So we, I'm going to invoke the rule of necessity, which is explaining that voting members of the committee that receive retirement health benefits will be, will still be able to vote on the budget for advisory 5-5, the rule of necessity.
So, let me do, I see you can say that.
Yes, so Mrs. Kozel and myself do receive retiree health benefits, so we wanted to make sure that's clear. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Chardia to start the certification process.
Do I just start with motions?
She's going to read motions. We'll read seconds on these motions. Do you agree?
Please let me see a person take a vote.
Mr. Mason will. Thank you.
All right, so, does any motion for, for the budget certification vote?
Okay. I move that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote and certify the amount of $20,402,581 for FY19 budget.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries?
I move that the Narrag-
Do we, I think we may need a roll call on that?
That's, might be right.
Yeah, we just, let's do it even so that we're all set.
Mr. Sandin?
No.
Stradion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Who's aye?
I move that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the estimated income of $10,264,674 for FY19, which is based on the Chapter 70 and 71 aid from the Governor's House One budget submission.
Second.
Does he have, they roll call, Mr. Sandin?
No.
Stradion?
Aye.
Strip low?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries?
I move that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the assessment to Templeton in the amount of $6,332,751.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Sandin?
No.
Stradion?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Okay, let's, motion carries?
I move that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the assessment to Phillipston in the amount of $1,532,96.
Second.
So call over, Mr. Sandin?
No.
Stradion?
Aye.
Strip low?
Yes.
Mrs. Kozel?
Aye. Mrs. Robichaud? Aye.
Chair, all chips. Motion carries?
I move that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the debt service of $417,911, of which money be, oh, okay. I, sorry, I'll start over. I vote that the Narragansett Regional, I move that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the debt service of $417,911 to be Templeton's assessment for the debt and $84,144 be Phillipston's debt assessment.
Second.
Roll call, roll. Mr. Sandin?
No.
Stradion?
Aye.
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 Chair, all chips.
Motion carries?
We have certified the budget. We have certified our budget.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think we need to go back onto that one and put in the total debt service, which we didn't do, which kind of threw me off there. Can we, I think we need to go back to that one.
So we're only, Mr. Mason, only number five wants she has the total debt service so that we're announcing that. We, we did the two towns, but we need the total. Thank you, Mrs. Chardia.
Sorry, I just didn't look ready to.
Is it number five or number six?
It's number five. Just, can we just clarify that last? Okay. I move that the Narragansett Regional School District vote the debt service of $502,555, of which $417,911 be Templeton's assessment and $84,144 be Phillipston's assessment.
Is this a, is this a change or?
It's not a change. It just includes the total. It includes the total.
The total the first time.
Mr. Sandin?
No.
Still aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Thank you, Mrs. Chardia.
Nice job, Mr. Mason and Mrs. Chardia. Thank you.
That must have been legal.
You have that correct?
All right, we have the superintendent's evaluations, goals and indicators. What we need to do now is just, first of all, take any input. We passed these out at the last meeting. Did every, is everybody, does everybody have them?
Yes.
Do we have any input on those goals? If not, we're going to take a vote that these will be the goals.
When is this due?
We're not, this, this is to accept the goals that here on, on this performance sheet includes the professional practice, student learning goals, district improvement goal, professional culture. So if, if there are no questions or comments where somebody wanted, we have a chart on the last page. You'll see in yellow what we have included from this rubric in the goals for the superintendent during this year. If anybody had any additions or wanted one in and one out. If not, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the goals of the superintendent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll be back with the timelines for those. We needed those accepted.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, we're meeting. And Dr. Kazmin, the school calendar.
All right, so, just because we came in kind of rush, I wanted to make sure that I didn't do, if you wouldn't mind. So as promised last week, we, we had two drafts that the hard-looking calendar committee worked on. And so we have honestly sent out a survey to all, all staff members from Narragansett Regional and to parents. We'll close that, close the survey sometime around today, one o'clock, I think. And just to make sure that you heard, we just, as much time as they could. So, so a couple of things, I just want to, just, if I could, just restate a few things. So what the goals were as described, this was at the very end of the meeting last week, last week when we discussed this, is that the main focus for both calendars, I can say to you, were that making sure that they put as much instructional time prior to the many assessments that we have, whether they be AP, whether they be MCAS, et cetera. With, you know, we were quite frank about the fact that, you know, given that, we had a lot of, we've had a lot of snow days the last, actually, the last two, the last two school years. And it seems to be a trend that six, seven, sometimes eight, snow days are not uncommon, whereas before it used to be, well, you hit, you'd go for five, you'd be, so that was also the other focus, is to see what they could do. And so the two options, really, the bigger differences between the two is one has April vacation and one does not. Now, I will say to you that the other motivation, which the calendar committee didn't have necessarily, just not their scope, that I have is that regardless, next year, so next summer, right, is when we will be moving into the new building. Thirty-plus teachers will be moving hither and yon to, with all their stuff, it's going to, whether they're coming here, whether, I mean, they're going there, waiting with the reorganization group also knows what I speak. So no matter what, thirty-some odd teachers, so I'm, we're going to need as much time as possible before August of 2019 when that building opens. So that was something that I was, you know, that I had in my, my purview, not necessarily that of the, the calendar committee. You have for you, and I have this, why you do surveys? Because what someone said to me was that, quite frankly, this, this thing is going to, you will not get a vote for, for, you know, going for vacation. It'll, this thing will be, you watch. Well, now granted, I'm not saying that it was close for both groups. I'm not saying that, but I have to tell you that when the parents voted, because I was told that the parents would absolutely just never buy into this, that is a really close vote. I mean, if you talk about close to 430 folks who responded, I mean, 54 said, yeah, let's, let's have April vacation and what, 45.8 said, no, we don't want, we don't want April vacation. The staff, obviously, you know, we talked about that, and had a good prediction. Staff said, look, we want April vacation, 63 percent said that, and 37 percent said no. The bigger issue, now, we didn't give a, we didn't give a box to write any comments because last time we did that, it really just kind of, it just kind of went off in all these different directions. But one of the bigger comments that I ever see via email, et cetera, was like, what happened to the four-day Labor Day weekend? But that was, that was something that I received about, I would say about eight or nine emails and people would stop me and just ask. Again, in respect to the calendar committee, they were looking through the lens of, let's put as many full weeks as we can, get these kids going and thinking about as many instructional days prior to, it gets busy, obviously, after, say after, okay. So again, the, the calendar certainly is your purview, you know. You know, you have the information in terms of what the staff and what the parent base feels. There have been folks who said, well, never mind April, let's move it to March, which actually was a conversation last year, if remember.
Or maybe next year.
You know, and so, again, we're talking about the, you know, the group of teachers and administrators who sat on this calendar committee. And so they tried to do something, again, along those lines as, as was directed. So, what you have before you is two viable options. They look very similar, with the exception of April vacation.
Which is three days, really.
Which is, again, those, April vacation next year is, really is on each end, is a holiday on each end of the week. There's only, I should say only, there are three days that truly would be considered either vacation or school days, depending on how you look at it. I was, I was pleasantly surprised that the folks who were in charge of this didn't sprinkle those three days to do long weekends. They said, no, we'd rather be, we'd rather get out of it. Okay, so, again, when you work with the committee, you want to, uh, yeah, the bond process, that's, that's kind of what we do.
Mrs. Kozel?
I'll make a motion. Are you ready for it? Or do you want discussion?
Well, we can discuss after your motion.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion that we go with the traditional calendar. Second.
Now, discussion?
There's really not much difference. Three days they would have had off, you know, come to school in April, but now they've got the vacations.
And you put the survey out there, so you might as well go with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, the survey results honor that.
We should respect people that responded and their, what they said, so, yeah.
Plus, they're getting out June 10th.
It's.
I, you know, it's very early. And actually, folks, don't forget, you're going to start a committee to do potentially with snow bags or blizzard bags or flurry folders, et cetera, whatever you want to call them. And so we will be starting with that conversation. So that could very well possibly affect any.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Haley?
I don't, I didn't hear what Dr. Kazman, what Dr. Stetler said, but I had asked for Mahar does, maybe other schools do e-learning on snow days. Julia, did you do that, did we consider that?
No, right now there's an option. We're talking about blizzard bags. In that conversation will come e-learning days as well. So, what we have.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, so.
No, that's fine. What we have is a discussion on suing. And there, there is already input. And we haven't even started our discussion, so.
Thank you.
So that's what's happening. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have other comments?
Just, I'm thinking the year when we open the school, we may want to hold off on the start date. We might want to open after Labor Day that year. Just to, in case we have problems opening and stuff, that give us a little bit of extra time. But that's a discussion for next year.
That's right, it's a comment. That comment that was just made was that when we open the new school, we might have a later start date just for discussion, was mentioned. But the motion on the floor right now is to do a calendar with April vacation. It honors the calendar, the survey results as received. And, so that would be option A. And we'll put these results on the table. I should leave if you'd like to see them, see the, the graph that's done. Are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Turn this over now to Mrs. Kozel for the policy reading.
Yes, we have policies that are up for a first reading. There are two that are brand new, I'll get to that. But the first one is update J I C H, which is the alcohol, tobacco and drug use by students prohibited. The language has been added to address the verbal screening element now that DESI has issued direct guidance on grade levels and the legislature has allocated funds for the implementation with the Department of Public Health. And this is the new wording. I'm going to read it out loud just so that people can hear. The school district shall utilize, in accordance with law, a verbal screening tool approved by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to screen students for substance abuse disorders. The tool shall be administered by trained staff on an annual basis at grades seven and nine. Parents, guardians shall be notified prior to the opening of school each year. Parents, guardians shall have the right to opt out of the screening by written notice prior to or during the screening. All statements made by a student during a screening are confidential and shall not be disclosed except in the event of immediate medical emergency or in accordance with law. De-identified results shall be reported to the Department of Public Health with, within 90 days of the completion of the screening process. So that's new, it's added to what we already have. But that's the new wording. The new policy, G B E B D, online fundraising and solicitation, this is brand new and it's lengthy. So I'd like you to look at it and just, if you have anything to say next meeting, please do. I'm not going to read it out loud, it's too long. The same with I L D. It's a policy, student submission to educational surveys. New policy to ensure district compliance with the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment, P P R A, also referred to as the Hatch Amendment. This relates to the use of surveys and other instruments for gathering research data in education programs receiving federal funds. And the one before, the online, new policy to address online crowdfunding resources such as GoFundMe and others, which could result in both tax implications and conflict of interest. So those are long, I'd like you to read them. Update D G A, regional school district authorized signatures. This update policy to be consistent with the law, only to have the treasurer slash assistant treasurer authorized to sign check withdrawals and bank forms. And so, that is going to, that says, the treasurer and the assistant treasurer are authorized to sign check withdrawals and to sign the appropriate bank forms for the regional school district. Just that. And then the last one is an update for D J E, bidding requirements. We're changing the amount. We're updating the policy to reference new bid law requirements, which states over $50,000 used competitive bidding. $10,000 to $50,000 requires attempt to secure three bids and under $10,000 using sound business practices for purchasing. And added wording is, all purchases valued between $10,000 and $50,000 shall require the procurement officer to attempt to secure three quotes for all materials, equipment or services. All purchases valued at less than $10,000 shall require the use of sound business practices to secure the best quality at the best price. And then we have a word down below where we're, instead of mailing or mailed, we're doing distribution and distributed and changing the amount from $25,000 to $50,000. And I would like a motion to accept those for first reading, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. Our next school committee meeting will be April 25th at 6 o'clock in Lakiva. And I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a meeting Monday morning?